And the work of ours always begin from Thee and by Thee be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen. Well, ladies and gentlemen, you know today is a one item agenda. It is to review the draft county development plan. And our desire at the end of the meeting is that you, the council, recommend that it will go to public consultation. A lot of work has been done by the planning section and a compliment on the work they have done. It is not a simple process, it's a difficult process and we all know that. I know all of you have been looking carefully at it and have read it in detail and it's not a simple read either, but it's probably more simple than in the past. So I propose today that we have a good discussion on it. The order which I will call people to speak will be first of all, the chief executives say if you were, so Eugene, if you're tuned in. Sorry, I'm not sure if I have you, Eugene, if I haven't, there's one other light item I want to do before that.
Sorry, Cahill, I was on mute there, I beg your pardon.
Sorry, I might have to stop you again, Eugene, I'm told due to Covid, there's another job I have to do first and that is to do a roll call of members.
Okay.
So I'll just do that first, Valby Byrne.
Yes.
Liam Callaghan. Liam Callaghan. Ivan Connerton. Tom Crosby. I certainly see Tom Crosby there, so that'll do me. John Commons.
Here.
Earlier, Nigel Dunneen.
Yeah.
Good, I'm here myself, Pascal Fitzmaurice. Pascal Witters. John Go.
Yeah.
Donald Kilduff.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Morning, Donald. Tony Leiden.
Present.
Marty McDermott. Marty McDermott. Michael Mulligan.
On show.
Yeah, Joe Murphy.
Here.
Earlier, John Nocton.
Here, Lawrence.
Thank you. Cathy in Cheltenham, certainly throw her in.
Yes.
Anthony Waldron. Anthony Waldron. Tony Ward.
On show.
Thank you, Tony. Now, back up again, Liam Callaghan. Ivan Connerton. Pascal Fitzmaurice. And Anthony Waldron. So let's wish you would just keep an eye on who joins and as they do, we'll announce them as well. So now Eugene, the third attempt over to yourself.
Okay, thank you, Cahill, and again, good morning to everyone. And I think we might have a few people that have joined as well, other than members and executives, so they're welcome too. So Cahill, like I said, an awful lot of work done in relation to bringing this document to where it is. And like yourself, I'd like to congratulate Mary and Tanker indeed and our team for preparing the plan and bringing all this information together. It's not an easy task and especially when everyone has to be reminded and work in a situation where everything that is done and brought together is very much, it's a very much legal document on top of everything else. Very important document, a very important morning's work. And the next 12 months or so, a very important period, sets out a chart and a course, a direction for the development of the county in every respect, from an environmental perspective and from jobs perspective, growth, town, settlements and all of that. And you are all aware that it's a very important document. And one of the most important documents for members in particular, where a huge role in bringing the document to its perfected state and you know that too. So I suppose, you know, the way the document has been presented, it's easily readable, it's very well joined up document, but in all of it, it's complex in the sense that, simple in terms of reading but complex in terms of all of the policies that has to take account of and pay regard to and especially the section 28 guidelines, which calls on us and tells us that we have to be very mindful of climate change, density issues and rural housing. And as part of the process, we did introduce a few new initiatives under Mayor's guidance as well. And that was the meeting with the members to obtain and include your views on the issue's paper and the creation of a dedicated website, which as part of the public consultation and was very much appreciated by the Office of the Planning Regulation and we'll be hearing a lot more about that later in the presentation. And we did endeavor to consult with the schools, but unfortunately Covid came in. And then the creation of the village plans and the allocation of a new zoning in the towns to create flexibility. And as you know, Cahill, members, the RSES that have been adopted, the National Planning Framework, that does cert, those two documents, the RSES, the two of them actually in particular, set parameters that we have to adhere to. And again, P O and Mary will be speaking to that later in the morning. And for the first time, the Office of the Planning Regulation would be consulted in relation to the plan. And it's important that members are cognizant of the fact that the plan presented is in accordance to section 28 guidelines. And again, they'll be hearing more of that in the morning. So again, you know, like all strategic plans, it is very much strategic in nature and if that being the case, it can possibly deal with every detail. And finally then, Cahill, members, that if the members agreed to the draft going to public consultation, it will do so two weeks from today. And the consultation process will last 10 weeks with another 12 weeks provided for the compilation of the chief executive's report, my report. And finally, it's important that members that are aware that this is, that there will be another opportunity to discuss the plan in its entirety after the public consultation process. And I'm sure, and I would be disappointed if it wasn't otherwise, that it will be a lot of good debates during the process. And I say so much disappointed that that wasn't the case because it's going to be an important document. And you know, there are going to be issues that are going to be of concern to you obviously. So I look forward to working with you as always in the next 12 months to deliver this important document. And we can expect involvement of the Planning Regulator. And that's not to be feared in any way. And knowing the work that has been put into the draft, I would be quite, be confident even at this stage that we will get through that exercise. Well, so Cahill and members, thank you for the opportunity to say that and I'll hand it back to you, Cahill.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Yeah, I'll move to the planning section in a minute, but just before I do, and for the members who are formulating their thoughts and comments that they might want to make later, just to be sure that what we're doing today is planning to put it out to public consultation. We are not excluding any section going forward after this. So the plan can be discussed again in its entirety when we get through that process. So nothing will be excluded from discussion at the next section either because there may have been a perception, it's one I might have had myself, that certain things might be excluded going forward. Everything can be discussed again at the next meeting we have on this, which might be in October, November. So nothing will be excluded from today. I want to, what have I got here? People who are connected already, Waldron, McDermott, Connerton, Callaghan and Fitzmaurice, all are connected now it is. So we have a full attendance of councillors, I welcome them and I also welcome our outside guests, let them be from the media or interested parties as well, they're very welcome indeed. I'll move on to Martin Leiden in the planning section, Martin.
Thank you, Cahill, and thank you, members. Just to, one of the guests who is joining us today is David Lestrade from CAS and that was the consultants that we use to prepare our environmental reports. So if there's anything around those issues, then you welcome David to the meeting. And David will be able to help out with any questions in relation to that. And I do really think it's important for members to be aware that I don't think today is really for wholesale changes, as you would have known from some of the discussions that I've had with some of you. I think it'd be premature and the reason I think it'd be premature to do that, and I'm sure you've been looking at the national picture, is that we really are going to be dependent on the input that comes from the Office of the Planning Regulator. They are going to have a real big impact in relation to this plan. And I think it'd be sort of cautious and correct to wait to see what their feedback is. But as well as waiting for their feedback, it's also important that we wait for the feedback from the public, who I'm sure then will be making representations to yourself in relation to various elements of the plan. Before we actually get into a presentation from Mary and P O, the chief executive mentioned the section 28. I can't stress how important is that we really do follow the guidelines that have been laid down to us by the minister. And in doing so, that's why it's important, it goes out to public consultation so that issues then can be addressed in that October or November meeting. Let's say it's likely to be November, where you'll be able to make some changes to the plan. Before we get actually into the presentation itself, I just would like to note the following amendments that we'd like to make to the plan. And we'd like to, in the draft that goes out to the public, include appendix one of the landscape character assessment, the suite of mats that P O would have shared with you yesterday. And we are working on those and we'd really like to put those out on public consultation so we give a full, open, transparent picture to the general public. On top of that as well, I suppose it comes with the sort of issues of working remotely. There are some typos within the plan and that was to be expected because we're all working in different living rooms in trying to prepare the plan. So we would like to reexamine some of the descriptive text within the plan, but really mainly in reference to specific companies taking that out and any other sort of cross-reference in between policies. And I know that Cahill will like to come in on some of those policies as well. But now what I'll do is we'll hand you over to Mary and P O. P O will be starting us off in relation to the presentation on the development plan, followed by Mary. And then we were available here to take some questions and see if we can help in relation to the next stage of the plan. So Cahill, if that's okay with you, I'll hand over to P O.
My, not bothering you yet.
Okay, good morning, members, and thank you for joining us this morning. Just to give a brief run through of what the presentation will entail, we'll go through very briefly the process and the development plan process itself, the content of the draft plan that would have been circulated to yourselves. We'll talk through a few of the headline issues that have arose through consultation and through discussion with yourselves. And then at the end, we'll discuss the next steps involved in the process and some things that to take note of. So in terms of the development plan process itself, the process is a three-stage process. At the moment, we are at the end of stage one, which is the pre-draft. So we've gone through our public consultation as the chief executive has gone through there. We had a very successful consultation this time round. And the chief executive's report was issued to yourselves and we discussed that a number of weeks ago. And since then, we have been preparing the draft plan and this was the final stage of the pre-draft. So that has been distributed to members. And the next stage is the publication of the draft plan, which is stage two, which we'll discuss a little in more detail later on, which will start with public consultation for 10 weeks. And in terms of the content then of the draft county plan itself, the plan has been prepared in line with the principles of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, the NPS, the National Planning Framework, and the Regional Spatial and Economic Strategies, or the RSES. And it's also been prepared in accordance with section 28 ministerial guidelines, which we're about to do as well. The plan consists of two volumes, volume one and two, and there's also a number of associated documents with it. So the housing strategy and the housing need demand assessment, the landscape character assessment, the record of protected structures, renewable energy strategy and the retail strategy. The plan has also been subject to a number of environmental reports. And just to reiterate, Martin's welcome to David Lestrade who's here with us today and thank them for their input into this. That is the Strategic Environmental Assessment, the Natura Impact Report and the Strategic Flood Risk Assessment. All these have been undertaken as part of the draft as well. So volume one of the plan, this sets out the local level of strategic direction in the county and how we see the county will develop within the next six years. It sets out the core strategy as its basis and then it details a number of mandatory objectives which we're about to include and also discretionary ones across a broad range of policy areas. You will note while reading the volume one that the policy ranges, they overlap over a lot of the chapters and a lot of them are common. In the chapters themselves, you have the core strategy and settlement policy, then people, places and housing, towns and villages, rural development, national resources, economic development, infrastructure, which includes transport and communications, climate action, energy and environment, then our built-in natural heritage as well as social community and cultural development. And there is also a section then on development management standards in volume one. Volume two then contains a number of settlement plans for the towns of Ballyhadrin, Casselery, Elfin and Stropestone, as well as 28 village plans with smaller settlements. And this is the new initiative that we've included this time in the draft plan. Volume two also includes area plans for Hudson Bay, Barrymore in the south and as well as Lock Key in the north. So some of the headline issues that have arose in the past 12 months during the preparation of the pre-draft. First off is the core strategy itself and this forms the central part of the county development plan. So the National Planning Framework and the Regional Spatial Strategy set the criteria for county development plans on the hierarchy of plans in the country. The National Planning Framework being at the top. And the implementation of this was set out in a roadmap which was issued by the department approximately 18 months ago. In this, there was an increase in population projected for the county between 6,000 and 7,000 for the planned period. Just before Christmas then, the department issued section 28 guidelines in relation to housing supply and how the methodology for calculating that. So this methodology, it was a complex methodology with using ESRI data as well as current bills, CSO, the data in relation to current bills. And it gives a total of 2,353 units for the planned period. And this amounts to a population of 6,307 for the planned period for the county. And this falls within the initial roadmap that would have been outlined in the National Planning Framework. So the core strategy itself can be summarized in the core strategy table which you see here in front of you. We have our settlement types and our settlements, which are based on the NPS and the RSES designations, such as the Regional Growth Centre in Athlone, Mungslan, Belnamoylea, and also the key towns of Roscommon and Cortogor, which forms part of Carrick and Shannon in the north of the county. In this, you can see how the 2,353 units has been spread out around the county. I'd just like to draw members' attention to a couple of numbers there. In terms of the right-hand column, a new thing that has been included in the NPS is that 30% of all units have to be provided on infill or brownfield lands. So there we have 556 units that will be provided in the lifetime of the plan in brownfield infill lands in existing settlements. And that amounts to approximately 24% of all housing. So that goes a long way in meeting one of the national objectives in the NPS of compact growth. In our towns then and our town plans that we've included in volume two, we've also included a new approach to zoning. We've moved towards a more strategic land use strategy and moved away from the functionalist land zoning of the past, which would have seen a specific banks of land set aside for specific uses only. And so the aim for this was to increase the flexibility for development in these towns and also to provide a greater mix of uses in appropriate locations. So if we look at an example here, this is the LAP for Ballyhadrin and you can see there was 15 land uses, 15 different zoning classes in the previous LAP. And this has been changed to our new strategic land use zoning, which includes seven land uses. In that you have town core, outer core, a new residential, strategic, industrial enterprise, unzoned and then greenbelt areas as well. So what do these zonings mean? Well, the town core, that is to consolidate the town core itself, to make it a resilient, vibrant area, to have high quality built environment and to make sure that there is an appropriate mix of all uses in the town centre. We already do have town centre, town core centre zonings in all of our settlements and they're working quite well. And this is just an expansion of that. In the outer core then, this provides for a number of various uses which would complement the town as compared to detract from the town core. And then important here to note then that small scale infill residential development may be applicable and may be suitable here. In terms of new residential, the areas that have been classified as new residential, these have been identified in line with the sequential approach, which means that we have started from the centre of the town and worked out. And this will accommodate residential development which would be on a larger scale that could be accommodated in the town centre. And multi-unit development will be the primary form here. In terms of the industrial enterprises areas, this allows for expansion of our existing industry in all of our towns and settlements, as well as providing new lands for a possible and suitable investment at macro and micro level. The greenbelt zoning is there to protect the environmental quality and character of the areas, which is straightforward enough. But it also includes lands where landowners have confirmed that the lands were being used for agricultural purposes at the time we were assessing to the vacant site levy a number of years ago. So at the time of the vacant site levy, there was approximately 170 sites that we looked at. And when we wrote to those, we received a number of submissions back saying that lands were being used for agricultural purposes and these were then not included on the vacant site levy. So that is, that explains that in relation to those sites. Then there's some unzoned lands or what's commonly known as white lands, you'd have noticed that. And these are towards the edges or the outer environments of the settlements themselves. And given their peripheral location of the town, it's not really appropriate that any particular land use would be promoted there specifically. But all development proposals will be considered, but it will be on their individual planning merits and it will have to have regard to the location of the proposal and the context of the surrounding environment. So just to bring members then, just to show you the zoning matrix, you can see the difference from what is proposed here to what was in previously. It is a much higher level and more strategic zoning matrix that we are proposing now. And we're not going into the level of detail that we had done in the past. And we hope that this will provide for a level of flexibility when developments are being proposed. So as mentioned earlier then as well, we're also proposing village plans for 28 of our settlements. And here's an example of one in Urrigna and it just shows that we have a boundary around the village and within that boundary is where we see that we can facilitate economic and residential social developments, which is appropriate to the settlement setting itself. We would like for these villages to provide an attractive alternative to one-off housing. One-off housing is an immortal issue obviously. And specifically in the south of the county where there is higher levels of demand, we would like to see the villages, the settlements being used as alternatives for one-offs in that area. And with that in mind, we did employ an architectural firm to come up with some concepts for potential developments in our villages. We didn't specify any particular villages in the county, they were just taken as generic rural typologies. And here you can just see what a crossroads village in a rural area and how potentially you could provide for a number of different types of dwellings of different types of tenure in a village setting. In terms of rural housing then, the NPS and RSES, they designate two rural area types. One is areas under urban influence and the other is all other rural areas. So an area under urban influence, that is defined where 15% of the workforce is employed in one of the metropolitan areas or cities, regional centres and the key towns is designated in the NPS and RSES. So what we've done here is we've used commuter figures from the CSO and we've used it on a DED level to see the level of commuting from each electoral district to these towns and settlements. The towns that impact on Roscommon, it's County Roscommon area, Athlone, Bangla Slo, Carrick and Shannon, Longford and Roscommon. And you can see on the map here, the areas and the electoral districts where in excess of 15% of those areas commute to those towns and settlements. So our rural housing policy in the draft, this is how it's worked. We will facilitate single houses in rural areas subject to appropriate siting and design criteria. Now, it's important to note the siting and design criteria, as this is specifically outlined in the NPS, that all rural housing has to be subject to appropriate siting and design. In cases where single houses are being proposed in areas under urban influence, then applicants will be required to demonstrate a social or economic link to that area which they propose to build. And in the draft, we identified what the economic and social need was. So here you can see the economic need, I won't go to read it all, but it identifies people who are working or engaged in rural-based activities or in businesses that require them to reside in rural areas. And then in social need.
We've lost him.
I think we lost him, P O.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear either.
Do you, if you can hear us, you're gone.
Excellent presentation though. It's a pity.
Okay, we'll hold a minute and see if we can get a P O back, all right.
Cahill, maybe if some of us just maybe tune out, maybe just put ourselves on silent or maybe go off camera, that maybe might be a head.
No harm, yeah, do that if you want, yeah, absolutely, yeah. This is to vague reasons of remote working, I suppose.
Cahill, you might sing a song while we're waiting.
How's your voice? Because mine would never be good on the singing anyway, there's no doubt about that. I wasn't blessed with that sort of, but feel free if you want to link or anything you want to say yourself, yeah. How about the rose of Casselery, is that what you were thinking or were you?
I was half thinking about it, all right, yeah, we might do a trio, myself, Pascal and Anthony.
Maybe when you're ready, just keep it on silent as well.
Okay.
Are we back in business?
We can hear you, but we.
Can you hear us, Lawrence?
Yeah, you're fine, are you?
Okay, I might have to.
I can hear you, but we can't see you, Pio.
Okay, no problem.
Many status, we many status we had that.
Now they can see us again, I think, okay.
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Just for your coming back in there, just to the councillors, I see hands going up. I assume that's because you want to ask questions when the presentation is over, that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, fine, fine. Like this stock exchange, when you raise a room, it's amazing how they fly up. Now you're visual and a Pio. You're on silent, Pio, I think.
Okay, Lawrence, yeah, we're just.
You're good again now, okay.
You can see the room, you can?
Yeah, see the room, yeah.
Okay, perfect, lovely.
Okay, when you're ready, sail off.
Okay, just bear with us a second, Lawrence.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Lawrence?
Yeah, you're back now, you're back, we can hear you.
Okay, Pio, when you're ready, all is good.
Okay, yeah, apologies, you seem to have lost. I seem to have lost you during the presentation there. Is there a slide that you want me to go back to?
Go back.
I think it is.
One-off housing is such a rash when you grow up.
Perfect, okay. Apologies, apologies to that, my respect.
Everybody might go on silent now except Pio, okay.
I'll just, I'll just go through them, you know, bring it back down to where it was. Look, the next, yeah, as I was going through there, the social and economic need. Excuse me, and the next slide then I was just going through was some for rural clustering, this is a new initiative that we brought around in this in this version of the plan is to try and accommodate a number of of number of houses in rural areas. And it was, it's based on a settlement typology of the clocking, which would have been traditional in rural areas. And and you can see just there that the images on the on the right hand side of the screen. And it's it's just been brought in as well just to discourage and rig and development and try to move away from that. And so the next slide then was just replacement houses. This had also come up a couple of times in in our consultation. And we have reworded our policy so that we will permit the development, the demolition of of substandard dwellings and the replacement with a new single dwelling. And this is just subject to normal site suitability considerations, which would be normal. That has been reworded following discussions over the last, over the last few months and in terms in relation to public consultation as well. So I'm just going to hand over now to Mary Greer, the senior planner, who's going to discuss the next steps involved. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pio, okay, Mary.
Thank you, thank you, Pio. Yes, now, the next steps is really just a few slides to talk about the procedure and the timelines involved and the actions that may unfold as we go through the process. And so as you can see, we're now about to enter stage two. This is where the draft plan will go on public consultation. And there are prescribed periods within which actions must be taken. So the first part of that is that within two weeks from today, it will be placed on public displays. So that will be by the twenty first of April at the latest. And it's then open for a public consultation period of not less than ten weeks. And so that would take us to the end of June, early July. We will during the process be focusing, at least in the initial stages, on our online presence, given the continuing COVID nineteen restrictions. Depending on how those restrictions ease up as we go through the process, we will also be looking at devising more traditional consultation methods as well. So they will be rolled out as we advance through the the consultation period. And so in the more detailed timelines, then looking a bit forward from that, and at the end of the public consultation period, we then go into the phase of preparing the chief executive's report. That summarizes all of the submissions received. And that will be issued to members not later than twenty two weeks after we have given notice. So twenty two weeks from April. And now, there are a number of timelines that are prescribed within legislation. Some of them are mandatory minimum timelines that we have to adhere to. Others are maximum timelines where there's an opportunity to to shorten some of those periods. So where possible, we would, we would hope particularly for internal elements of work to be able to shorten those periods somewhat. And but until the process unfolds, until we know the extent of submissions that we're dealing with, we can't exactly guarantee what that would be. So all of the days that you're seeing here are based on using the maximum periods possible. So once members receive the chief executive's report, they have a period of time for follow-up consideration and will then have the formal consideration on that by mid-December at the latest. And now that is obviously the stage where there is opportunity to very much get into the detail, analyze what has been said by the general public and submissions, and note what has been said by the Office of Planning Regulation and so on, and what recommendations have come from that source. And now, in the event that there are no amendments to the plan at that point, and the plan, if members choose to adopt it at that stage, it will become effective six weeks later, unless it's subject to ministerial direction. Realistically, county development plans will generally tend to go down the route of material alterations. And so really, it's just a case of that being the likely scenario. And in the event that members determine that material alterations are required to be met to the plan after considering the chief executive's report, we have a period of three weeks on which to prepare those and get those out on public display. So that next round of public consultation is for a minimum period of not less than four weeks. After that, there will then be a further chief executive's report prepared on submissions received. The submissions that will be received at that stage would only be in relation to material alterations to the plan. It's not about other elements that would have effectively been agreed at that point. And members would then receive the report and would formally consider it and would at that stage get to the point of adopting the plan. So again, using maximum time limits, that would take us to a potential plan adoption by the end of May twenty twenty two. But as I said at the outset, there are a number of periods within the process which shorter time scales can prevail. So using those periods, we would expect to be in a position to get to final adoption within quarter one of twenty twenty two. That is all subject to the situation regarding ministerial directions. Now, both the chief executive and the director of service have alluded to and this in in previous speeches this morning, referring to particularly the need to, our obligations to adhere to the national planning framework, the regional spatial and economic strategy, and crucially to section twenty eight ministerial guidelines. And so in terms of what may happen in the event that it's deemed that the plan hasn't been prepared to be forward with all of the provisions, there is the potential that a ministerial direction could be issued. So the slide that you're seeing at the moment effectively runs through circumstances in which that situation may unfold. So it's where the planning authority would fail to implement recommendations made by the minister or by the Office of Planning Regulation, or if the planning authority is failed to take into account a submission or observation made by the minister or the O P R. And it would also be if the plan is considered to fail to set out an overall strategy for proper planning and sustainable development of the area, or if it's not consistent with the national planning framework, the regional spatial and economic strategy, or the section twenty eight guidelines, or if it's generally not considered to be in compliance with the Planning and Development Act. So under the the new regime of the Office of the Planning Regulation, the issuing of the direction would occur in the event that the O P R actually makes that recommendation to the minister. So, you know, we would hope that it's a situation that we don't end up in, but it is something to be aware of nonetheless. So that's really just a summary of the procedure. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you very much, Mary, for that, and thanks to Pio as well for the presentation. And at this stage, I think we need to open it up to the floor. But before that, I have just a couple of, some, a couple of suggested changes to text and various things, and also a couple of observations on my own. The first one is, I I just want to mention that Roscommon is a very important agricultural county. It produces huge volumes of food for the world and for to feed its own people as well. There is probably at least twelve thousand people directly associated with agriculture in County Roscommon. I think the document doesn't reflect that as fully as I would like to see it reflecting that. I'm not proposing that we make changes today, but I want to flag this as an issue. I think it's absolutely right that we should be talking about a whole range of alternative agriculture. Absolutely right, we should be talking about arts and foods and a whole range of things, as the document does. But I think the core principle of the twelve thousand that could be employed in County Roscommon largely are because of commercial agriculture. And and that will continue to be the key driver of employment in County Roscommon into the future and for the duration of this plan as well. So I would hope that when this goes out to public consultation, that the bodies who are directly associated with agriculture would respond to the document positively as to how better we could strengthen the significance of agriculture within the document and how better we could reflect the importance of agriculture in the county, through the county development plan. Not critical of what's in it already, because I think it is an important segment. But the main issue of agriculture will continue to be a commercial agriculture, with all the constraints of the environment and the constraints of Brussels control and regulation that will will go with it. So I would hope that when it comes back after the public consultation, that there will be a number of recommendations and proposals to strengthen the agricultural section, because I think, as the document currently sits with me, it it is not adequate to reflect the important employer that agriculture is in the county. The second point I just want to mention to you is we have done a very significant number of plans for draft plans for the different towns and villages, all of them showing the cores where development should take place. I think there is a need for an assessment as to how much within the core is likely to be available for development. Because there's no point in suggesting we have five hectares of land somewhere within the core if we know and everybody else knows that the people that own that, and it's their right, have no great desire to develop it, other than to leave it the way it is, let that be in farming or whatever. So I would suggest that while accepting the the design of the villages and and the plans for the villages, that there is a need for an assessment to see what land is actually available for development within the core and maybe to adjust the plans accordingly, once we have that done. And the second, third point I want to make is in relation to, I suppose, a conflict within the plan, and it is in in chapter four. And it has to do with Hudson Bay, where there is a policy objectives four twenty to four twenty five are mentioned. Now, as far as I can see, there is no policy objectives four nineteen to four twenty five within the plan. So I have spoken to the planning section on this, and I am proposing that we might delete those because they they don't actually exist within the plan. So from four nine, the policy objectives from four nineteen to four twenty five, that that reference on page one five one of the Hudson Bay plan would be deleted because they're not, they're not populated across the plan, so they'd be really, I propose they'd be deleted. I also want to say that looking at Hudson Bay generally, recognizing it is an excellent tourist area and with huge tourist potential, but it is also a very significant residential area. A much thought after area, very close to Roscommon, to Athlone Town, an area that is in high demand. So I I found it unusual that while it is an area that's serviced, it's not within the, it's not within the the serviced area. So I would propose that Hudson Bay Barrymore should also be included in section two point six under urban service settlements, because it is an urban, it it is a settlement and it has service sites. So I'm proposing that Hudson Bay would be put into the same status as as the other service settlements as well, so that's a proposal I want to make.
I would second that, Corrheer, I would second that proposal that Chair councillor Fallon, and I I would see the Hudson Bay area as well. I, you know, Roscommon County Council spent a huge amount of money providing sewerage treatment plant for the people of the Hudson Bay Barrymore area. And my view and my feeling has always been. And my view and my feeling has always been that if you have a sewerage uh treatment plant in the area, every effort should be made to accommodate uh building and to accommodate the the residents there, and that the the, as far as I'm concerned, uh, the full uh benefit of that sewerage tram uh sewerage uh treatment plant hasn't been uh availed of. And I would would hope that uh all the lands within that uh area that the sewerage treatment plant from the railway gates right into the very end of the Hudson Bay and Barrymore, uh, that would be taken into consideration that uh people with lands within that area and have lands adjacent to the sewerage treatment plant, that that would be uh freed up and be be zoned residential. And as you said, it's it's one of the few areas, because if you look at the, which I agree very much and would have proposed in the last uh county development plan in relation to the number of houses per acre, which is approximately two or three houses per acre or four at the max. And I certainly uh would welcome that change, and uh I'd be proposing that that change would be put in place. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I'm silent.
Before you, before it starts, if you want to speak, just raise your hand button on your monitor so as I can see it. As I take them in the order in which they appeared on my monitor, okay? Counselor Orla Lynn.
Thanks, uh, Kahir Look, and I'd just like to start by thanking the Chief Executive, Martin Lyden, Mary Greer, P O Burns, and all the planning team for the work. Um, I'd like you, I'd like to emphasize that people would make submissions, even if they made submissions during the issues paper stage, that was a more strategic overview. It's really important that their specific issues are now considered when it goes out to draft, and I'd encourage people to make submissions to ensure their views are heard. It's really good to see the Sustainable Development Goals at the very beginning of the plan, and I, I suppose, flagging and and making it important that we would embed the Sustainable Development Goals throughout the plan, that it would be at the core and not just at the beginning. In relation to um submissions that can be made regarding protected structures and ACAs, uh, I would uh imagine, I I hope, and just ask for clarification, that they can be considered now uh when it goes out to draft, if people make submissions on them, that when it comes back, um, that there will be consideration given, and maybe if uh the planning team could explain how this consideration is given, if an area is deemed or a structure is deemed protected and areas deemed an ACA. I drew uh the attention of the planning section to Martin Lyden and team about the absence of a map, and and I'd like to propose today formally the inclusion of landscape character map of the scenic routes and views to accompany figure two appendix one, uh, that it would be included in the draft as it goes out, because without the map, um, the text i- is not um adequate, so I'm proposing that. Thank you. Um. In relation to uh the points made by the Kahir Look in relation to agriculture, I I have to agree that uh the emphasis, the wording needs to be stronger. We need to ensure that, I suppose, the traditional farming practices in County Roscommon that have fueled the local economy in terms of beef and sheep farming, that that is recognized within the plan and that we continue to to safeguard that and also expand the huge opportunity in the terms of horticulture. I would go further, I suppose, in the Kahir Look and and flag the danger to our county at present of the increased presence and accelerated presence of dairy farming at a time where we are uh in a climate emergency, and biodiversity is one of the key uh elements that has to be in our plan. So I really think we need to flag in our county development plan um that that's traditional farming practices are are to be uh preferred in terms of beef and sheep farming. What has happened with dairy dairy farming, I've seen it throughout the county in different places, is removal of hedgerows, replacement of rich grassland, varied uh clovers, et cetera, with monoculture. This isn't good for our county, it's not good for agriculture, it's not good for our food, it's not good for our our climate and for our world. In relation to just transition, I'd like to flag, and I will be making a submission on the issues that I've raised today and this included, that we need to include the words community engagement as well as consultation with stakeholders, agencies, et cetera. In relation to just transition, it affects the people in the communities on the ground. They have to be consulted, and there must be community engagement. Um, in terms of the environment, I'd like to expand the area in terms of solar energy. There seems to be an overemphasis on wind energy. We also should be quantifying the county's contribution to carbon sequestration. Um, we are, uh, you know, carrying a lot of the carbon, and in terms of our contribution to climate uh action, that needs to be quantified, I think, as well. We also, I believe, in this plan should be supporting the development of a circular economy and also perhaps developing a circular economy uh village. Finally, I just summarize, uh, I think we need to include, and I'm proposing and will be in my in my submission, uh, the development of a place strategy. The current strategy is way out of date, an integration strategy, an Irish language strategy, and uh thanks uh to the team again for the work, the huge work put in, and for having an issues paper and for consulting from a very early stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Orla, and and you might have heard the bell was ringing. Today we have an independent bell ringer who will watch the talk very carefully in three minutes is the amount. Uh, the next person to speak is, uh, wait just one second till I see, uh, Counselor Pasca Fitzmaurice.
Thank you, Kahir Look. Uh, can you hear me there?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. Uh, thank you to uh all the team who have put together all these documents, and uh I'm sure it it took quite a considerable amount of time to do that. Um, I suppose I have some concerns in relation to uh the documents and and the the development plan seems to have a huge emphasis on uh building up Roscommon Town from a um from a housing point of view and from an industrial and retail point of view. And I have a concern in relation to that, because I'd like to remind people that ninety-one percent of the population of Roscommon live outside of Roscommon Town, so th- those people must be thought of too. Uh, we have a huge challenge here when it comes to our towns and villages, when we see services being removed from them and people moving towards the towns for all of their retail and other purposes. And uh when it comes to climate change, this certainly is not a a good way to go forward. Uh, in relation to the zoning of lands, I have some concerns in relation to Castle Re. I see lands that were zoned for new housing have been removed, and I see lands that uh I know that will never be built on have been included for new housing. So I have concerns in relation to that, and I would like to see other lands zoned, and I'll make a submission on that going forward. Uh, in relation to um architectural conservation areas, uh, quite uh uh an amount of land or area in Castle Re is in an architectural conservation area. Now, how can we on one hand put all of this area into an architectural conservation area and talk about uh building uh on backlands and brown uh field sites? So i- it's making it impossible to do that, and I I would like to see some of those uh houses removed from that ACA on St. Patrick Street and on Main Street, so that we could facilitate uh access to those backlands for building houses. Certainly, we talk quite a lot about, um, I suppose, building within the town core, but there's no access in Castle Re to the lands in that town core. Um, there are a number of uh mistakes there in relation to uh Castle Re, and I spoke to you, P O, about that, and I hope that they will be rectified. Um, uh, also in relation to uh the zoning of lands, we we see in Castle Re where uh there are very, very few houses to rent or to buy at the moment, and uh how can we, as a county, improve the situation for people who want to buy an affordable house? And there are, I I don't know, does this plan really tackle that core problem? This is the core problem people have. It's impossible to rent or buy a house at the moment. Okay, it's very expensive to build a new house. We're very lucky, I see in Castle Re, where most of the houses, the old houses are being bought up, which is a good thing, and they're going to be regenerated, and that is very good. Uh, another thing I'd like to see in the plan, and that is the 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 concept of the fifteen-minute city or the fifteen-minute town, and that goes back to where you encourage people to cycle or walk within an area, and that their services will be within fifteen minutes. I'd like to see that when we're trying to tackle this climate emergency and climate change. I'd like to see that in the plan, where we can have routes within our congested towns for people to cycle or walk to the services. That is a good thing. It's something that should be in the plan. It's a very positive thing going forward. Uh, finally, I will be making a submission into the zoning of the land, and I will be making a submission into the areas of architectural conservation, because if if we're serious about trying to build on the backlands in towns like Castle Re, we have to remove some housing in order that you can access those lands. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor John Commons.
Uh, Kahir Look, I put my hand up when the CEO commenced his speech, so I'm sorry. I I must get some sort of red flag.
Counselor, I'll tell you the order in which they came up on. John Commons is next.
Immediately when the CEO started.
Someone right before you, I said. The way they came up here, right here near my screen, is John Commons, Marty McDermott, John Naughton, Liam Callahan, Joe Murphy, Tom Crosby, and that's the list I have to start to get to you, Tom, okay?
Kahir Look, it's wrong, because I I put my hand up immediately the CEO started to speak, and lots have seen that, okay?
Look, my screen has shown it clearly, clearly. John Commons is next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I'll be brief anyway, so I'll give Tom an opportunity to come in that little bit quicker. Um, basically, I would like to welcome the county development plan, draft plan, as been presented here today. I'd like to compliment the chief executive and the planning staff on getting the situation this far. Um, I wa- I welcome it in 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 most instances. There are a few issues that I intend to deal with through submissions later on. I don't think maybe today is the time to deal with it in that light. I think the most important thing that we need to do with this plan is that when it goes out on public display, that the people of the county are made aware that it's out on public display. Because in the past, when when plans are put out on public display, and when eventually we adopt them, we had people coming back to us saying, oh, we weren't aware it was on public display. So I think every every mechanism should be used to ensure that people are aware that it's out on public display, that they can still make submissions on it, and that their submissions will be dealt with favorably or otherwise, but that they have an opportunity to make those submissions. So I would be calling on the executive to use every mechanism possible to them to ensure that the vast majority of people in the county are aware that it's going out on public display and can make submissions to it. That in the end, when we adopt this plan at the end of this year or early next year, that it won't be seen as the plan of the executive or the councillors, it will be seen as the plan of the people of County Roscommon. Just a cou- a couple of issues I'd like to deal with. One is in relation to the zoning of lands for for resident, for residential development, especially around towns. I welcome the change in the policy, because clearly in the past, some some of the zonings that were done wasn't successful as regards development in towns, and I can speak for Boyle here in in regard to that. There was a lot of land zoned the last time, which was never developed. And I think that the the new methodology of zoning lands will be an improvement on that, but I will be making a submission or two on that in 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 the opportu- at opportune time. I think in relation to climate change, we have seen how our climate has changed over the last five years in the lifespan of the last plan. And going forward into the lifespan of the next plan, I think it's very important that especially in relation to flood plains and such development as that, that the people are made fully aware of what and where um development can take place in the plan. And the language needs to be very strong as regards climate change going forward, I believe, to ensure that people are aware of it, that climate is changing and we have to adopt that change. And I think that should be clearly stated within the plan. Also, in relation to the 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 amount of development that can be allowed within the county, I think um our population is supposed to increase by six thousand in the lifetime of this plan, with a with a possibility of two thousand two hundred and fifty-three houses being built. I say two thousand, two hundred and two are earmarked for Boyle. I think that's fine, and it's it's it's, but I think it's wishful thinking, and it's wishful thinking because I believe that with with the amount of regulation that is involved in the development and construction of houses at the moment, I cannot see any developer coming in, particularly in the town of Boyle, and building a large amount of houses in the hope that he's going to sell them on, because the margin between ca- uh and cost of building a house and selling it at the moment, the margin in between is up up to a hundred thousand, and developers have told me that unless that changes, that they are not going to be involved in in doing that in the future as regards building. I'm not sure if that can be put into the plan or anything about can be put into the plan, but it is a problem for the volume of houses we're going to build. And finally, Chair, the last comment I'd like to make, in relation to area plans, it's proposed to have an area plan for Cottabur. I know the area plan for Cottabur and the guidelines will be under the county development plan of Roscommon, but will that will that area be influenced by the county development plan for Leithram, which is right beside it? Thank you.
Okay, uh, if 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 something changes, I'd be the first to admit that it changes. I'm told by those who are monitoring my my screen that Counselor Crosby's hand was up at one stage, but it came down and it went up a second time. So Counselor Crosby, with that information in sight, I will let you in now, Counselor Crosby.
Thank you, Carl. If somebody must have taken it down.
Well, not me, I can assure you anyway. Okay.
Sky, I did put it up at the very outset.
Yeah, and so I have been informed by the good people who are watching me here, okay?
Anyhow, thank you very much, and I too would like to compliment the CEO and the director of planning and the senior planning staff, and indeed all the planning staff, because I've seen at least uh five or six of these development plans over the years, and there's no doubt this is very well presented. Uh, and it it gives uh both uh the councillors and hopefully the general public will have a big input into it, and uh uh less than a year down the road, hopefully, will be passing this plan. But I would like to see certain uh uh changes in it and certain insertions in it, and in particular, that to uh the development charges, like uh development charges were introduced to provide for infrastructure and community facilities uh where, basically where they were collected, and any surplus then could be used for uh the greater good in in the county. But uh as it stands, and we see it all around the county, but I'll give an example in my own village in Tarm and Barry. Uh, there has seven housing estates being uh built, new housing estates uh over the period from uh the early two thousands right up to two thousand and seven, eight or nine. And uh the development charges that were collected there would certainly be in excess. I'm not sure of the correct figure, but it's in around between, obviously around three million uh euro, but yet not a penny was spent in Tarm and Barry. Uh, not a penny, and that's uh certainly can, the records can be checked in in relation to that. Uh, despite the fact that there's no uh community facility in Tarm and Barry, despite the fact that there's no playground in Tarm and Barry, and worse still, where four of those housing estates were built along a busy stretch of road stretching out over a a kilometer or a kilometer and a half out of the village, uh where four of them were built. There's no footpath, no public light, which also leads to the the local national school, uh, the the village national school, which is full to capacity, and yet no footpath or no uh public lighting. So that's a sh- a serious uh, now, that has happened, obviously, back in uh uh back i- i- in the two, area two thousands, uh, up to two thousand and ten, when the development charges were coming in. Yes, I remember, and I wa- I was totally opposed to it, in one swoop, uh, uh, over three million was taken for one project in uh one particular area. And that type of thing has to be accommodated, and it should not be left open to a a decision. It should be embedded in the county development plan, and I'd be proposing that, because it will be fair and it will be good for our county to ensure that the proper infrastructure. It's a disaster now, from the point of view that uh we have a very unsafe, very unsafe, a very unsafe situation in uh where you have four housing estates. There's about thirty-five houses along that stretch of road, and you have the 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 uh local national school. Along with that, just finally, uh, uh, Kahir Look, I would like to just say the interpretations, I think I've always spoke about that in the past. I know there's a better effort being made so that uh different interpretations can't be taken out of the plan, but I think that's very important to try is uh to try and have that uh uh ensured. Also, where in my own parish in in Tarm and Barry Scramogue, Scramogue Park where I was born, uh, the village there has, or the ta- the the Scramogue itself has all the infrastructure, there's two new housing estates, a shop, uh, a public house, et cetera, and the status for village should be uh uh should be provided for a a community like that, because it has a lot of pluses to have uh the status of village in it. So I think that's something that should be considered in and because it's quite a populated area, it's very uh very much in between the the main town of Strokes Town and uh just out out outside Tarm and Barry, uh, two or three mile outside Tarm and Barry. So I think it's something that should be reconsidered.
Okay, Counselor, thank you very much. I'll hand you back to the planning section for responses to four councilors that have spoken or filed.
I'll um, I'll I'll start. Okay, yeah, and first of all, thank you for the observations and input so far. Um, just on Hudson Bay, just to just to be clear, I I actually don't think it'd be very wise to get into zoning issues today or changing maps. I think it's, again, I'll go back to what I said at the beginning, I think a cautious approach is required, um, because we need to see what the Office of the because we need to see what the Office of the Planning Regulator are going to come back with in relation to advice. And if you look across the country so far, they've actually brought in zoning arrangements rather than extending zoning arrangements because of what they're looking to do. So I just caution what we're looking to do there. The other thing I would say on ACAs, there's Policy 9.8 on page 128. I'm hoping that takes care of what needs to be done with ACAs where we say we're going to undertake an assessment. Now, we can't undertake that assessment. We need to bring in a conservation architect to make that assessment and we will do that as part of what needs to happen, who then puts forward the information to the minister. So it's in there that an assessment will be undertaken. And I've had conversations with the elected members. There are some areas that wish to become an ACA, has to be considered very carefully because it comes with additional responsibility. And obviously, there's the situation that councillor Fitzmaurice mentioned. Just the relation to the development plan, it's impossible not to avoid Roscommon Town. It's a key town within the RSES. And it would be amiss of us if we didn't make a play in relation to that. It is the county town and it needs to be identified, okay? I'd also like to point out, this is a development plan, this is not a housing plan. This is not to create affordable housing for constituents or for the citizens of Roscommon. This is a strategic sort of land use plan with policies to try and encourage house building to take place. And I'm fully aware, obviously, as you know, of housing under my responsibility as well as planning. The only house building that's actually taking place in any prolific nature in the county at the moment is via the council. So I'm fully aware of the costs there. But we can only incentivise by identifying areas where it should happen. I'd also like to say, in identifying the zoning of lands, we have to undertake a sequential approach. If we don't take the sequential approach, we can zone the peripheral areas if we wish, but that's just not going to stack up and be acceptable to any bodies. I'd also say, on those lands that have been identified as residential, vacant site levies have been put on those lands and charges will be put on those lands. So if people don't use it, they will be charged. So if they don't want to have that land, it's up to them to make contact to try and get off the vacant site levy, which then in turn allows us then to remove the zoning from the land. And P O sort of mentioned that already, that's happened in this plan. There are people who made submissions to say they shouldn't be paying the vacant site levy. And as a result, they've lost the zoning on their land. And that will continue to be the case because you can't have it both ways. You can't say you don't want to pay the vacant site levy and then at the same time say you want to develop your land. That just doesn't add up anymore. So it's one or the other. So we just need to be clear in relation to that. I absolutely welcome the comments about community engagement and the consultation and councillor Leyden as well as councillor Cumming sort of aligned to that in relation to the public display of documents. I couldn't agree more. I think it's really important that the general public do understand this process, as complex as it is, and have their say in relation to the county. That being said, we are going to obviously be doing a big social media campaign as well as in the newspapers, and I think we'll be doing stuff on local radio as well to try and get people to be involved in having their say in relation to the plans themselves. That said, I have to say, when we did go out and do public consultations and face to face, I was very disappointed with some of the attendance in some of the towns. And in some of those towns, where actually there is marked investment going in. So it was very disappointing to find the sort of turnout in some of those towns and the people being interested in what goes on. Relation to an area plan for Carrick and Cortubber area, we won't be doing a separate plan for Cortubber. The aim there is to do a joint plan with Leithrim County Council for Carrick-on-Shannon and Cortubber area. On the population numbers, as I said this before privately, there'd be no one more delighted than me that if we end up getting that 6,400 additional people living within the county. That is a high number, but it's linked to the RSES and it's also linked now to the new calculations as per the Section 28 guideline. So they're the numbers we've been given and that's how we've gone about looking into zone lands throughout the county. Lastly, just on the development contributions, the development contributions and the scheme itself are based on the sort of Planning Development Act as amended 2001. And they say that unless there's special contributions, development contributions are for spending in the actual area of the county, not in specific areas where they were collected. So that's the development contributions. And I'd also say, as part of one of the policies in the plan is that the development contribution scheme will have to be reviewed. And as always, that is a decision then for the members as to what goes into the development contribution scheme and what comes out of the development contribution scheme. That said, as you'll be aware, if I just put my finance hat on just for a moment, the level of development contributions coming into this county at the moment for the last three years have really been at an all time low. We're really only just talking half a million a year of development contributions coming into the county. So that's a real issue. So I think that's answered most of those questions there, Cahill.
Thank you very much, Martin. Round two. I have four more councillors I want to speak, starting with Martin McDermott, John Nocton, Liam Callaghan and Joe Murphy. So, Martin McDermott.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I'd just like to thank the CEO, P O and Mary and Martin for their excellent work they've put into this development plan. It's obvious the CEO, a lot of work has gone into it and it's greatly appreciated. It's greatly appreciated. Look, I'm delighted what Martin has after highlighting there that it goes out of the public domain, the consultation and all the work that's gone into it and that's, as an elected representative. And it's very frustrating when people come back to you and tell you that, look, we didn't warn the aware of these plans or proposals or whatever the case may be. And it's great that that's been addressed and it's very, very important that it's put out in the public domain. One-off housing is a big issue for me and as are other issues there. Agriculture is very important and I think that's been very well highlighted here today coming from a cultural background myself personally. But one-off housing is very, very important and it's been a serious issue. It's been raised to me on numerous occasions since I've been elected to the council and that it's just that it's addressed and that it's highlighted to the best of your capacity. And look, apart from all that, everything is greatly welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marty. Councillor John Nocton.
Thanks very much, Lawrence. First of all, I'd just like to compliment the planning team and the Chief Executive and Martin, P O and Mary on the work they've done on this. And I think the document is very well presented. It's easy to read. And I think there's a big difference in previous plans and the amount of content that was in them. I think it's a lot easier read and easier for the public. And I think what other councillors have said in relation to submissions and the public getting involved and giving their contribution, I think now is their opportunity. And it's very important that we highlight that and ask them to get in their submissions. Just in relation to the document itself, one concern I'd have there is in relation to the high density of houses proposed for an area such as Monksland. While it is part of the regional hub of Athlon, I think 50 houses to the hectare is too high. I know it can be dealt with on a site specific basis and hopefully that will address it. But it is a concern that that's there in the document. There's a proposal for a joint urban area plan. I was just wondering, what is the legal status on that? It's something that hasn't been done, I think, before. So just in relation to that, what's the position with us? There's a number of infill sites removed from the plan that had zoning on them. And I think, Martin, you partially addressed it in relation to maybe submissions that were made and just clarity in relation to that, was it that people actually suggested themselves that they weren't using it for other activities? And just clarification on that, I'd like to welcome the fact that the zones are reduced from 15 to seven in the urban areas. I think that leaves it less complicated and allows for more flexibility in development. And the issues, Cahill, look, you raised yourself in relation to agriculture and all are raised in relation to the circular economy. I think there's things we need to strengthen in the document and also in relation to just transition and the importance of that going forward from a county's point of view. In the rural housing, just PPH 3.14 and in relation to the clustered housing developments, that there would be a preference for them over individual houses on standalone sites. That will work in a limited circumstances, but I wouldn't like it to see it coming as something we'd be forcing families into or something that they'd be feel they were being pushed to do. But it's something, I suppose, on a submission that can be dealt with. But I'd just like to highlight that at this point. Welcome the fact that the IN61, that we're looking for national primary status on that. And I think that's very welcome. There's issues there, you raised yourself, Cahill, look, in relation to points on page 151. And hopefully, we can address them today. And just again, to encourage people to get in their submissions because now is their opportunity over the next 10 to 12 weeks of this plan being on public to slay. But in general, I think it's a positive document. It's easy to read and it's well put together. And I'd just like to compliment everyone that was involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councillor Liam Callaghan.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'd like to thank everybody involved in the presentation of this plan. It's a very detailed document and very easily explained to us here today. Indeed, I suppose it's the people's plan now. They have the opportunity to put their mark on it and make their feelings known. And it's important too that we don't get held up on one issue. The plan is broad ranging and sometimes one issue can have the ability to scupper all the hard work of a good plan. So I think that it's important that we support it and we make it known to the public and work around any issues that will evolve. In relation to the housing developments in towns and that, I also have been issued that some of the developments have moved on from the Celtic Tiger years. In some of the towns, there's a lot of still derelict estates, derelict houses. And I'd like to see that some of those plans or some of those projects would be completed before we move forward to talking of building new houses. I'd also see it as new developments have, would have the ability to maybe leave some of the estates that were badly built, they're very shabbily built and badly managed. And I can see in some towns, some of these estates, people will want to get out of them and get newer homes or fresher or move on. So these are issues that will be part and parcel of our town and village development. In relation to agriculture, I feel strong that agriculture has moved in various directions now. And I think that dairy farming is the new game in town. Certainly, beef and sheep farmers are struggling to keep a pace with renting land and managing land like the way the dairy farmers are able to finance their renting and their projects. There'll be opportunities too for forestry. I think we have to give political leadership on both climate, bioenergy. We have to look at wind and solar farming as well as alternatives. And I think that's organic farming, there's an opportunity now for farmers to join the, they're taking applications again for farmers to, maybe smaller farmers that would like to take on organic and it's a new way that we could, in Roscommon, maybe market the organic label and the work the farmers are doing there. Also, I just want to mention that the Rural Development Plan was announced just some weeks ago and it has a huge amount of strategies going forward, such as supporting communities, agriculture, tourism, climate transition and remote working. There'll be unprecedented investment in rural Ireland, we're told, from this project. And I think we have to be ready here in Roscommon to take on those opportunities. In one part of the document, such as rural living, it says they intend to update the rural housing guidelines to address rural housing in a broader rural development context. So I wonder, is this included in the plan? Have we looked, we can ensure that the plan is geared towards getting young people back living, working and living and operating in rural areas. So I suppose if they're coming back, they will want to build houses. They won't be wanting to be hanging around saying, I looked for a house there and those strategies. But I just wonder, do the rural housing guidelines, what updates? Or did the county council get any notification on what type of an update they're talking about? Thank you very much. And again, I want to say well done to everybody for putting this plan together.
Thank you, councillor Callaghan. Councillor Joe Murphy.
Thank you very much, Chair, for letting me in there. I'd like also to thank the Chief Executive, Martin, P O and Mary for the great work they've done here. Very detailed plan. I know that they started with workshops and everything throughout the areas and I attended some of them in Strokes Town at the time and their engagement has been very positive. I suppose, as the Chief Executive alluded to there, this draft plan is within the perimeters of the National Development Plan and the Regional Spatial and Economic Strategy. Now, while on the Northwestern Regional Assembly, both myself and councillor Denine pushed hard to have Roscommon and Boyle as growth towns at the early stages of discussions on this and that Athlon would be a hub town, which none of these were mentioned at the time. I welcome a very diverse plan here. And there's just some issues and councillor Crosby alluded to one of them there, one of them that I was going to bring up and to Scramog Village. It was one of the villages where there was development of estates took place and every one of them are occupied. There's a school not far from it. There's two businesses. There's a civil engineering business offices in the village. There's a pub in the village and there's the famine walkway comes right through the village. And I do certainly think that that should be on one of these villages. It's ideally positioned between Strokes Town and Langford. And it's referenced in many books because of the Scramog ambush and that. I'd welcome P O saying about the demolition of substandard dwellings and being replaced with single storey dwellings. This has been a thing that I've mentioned at many meetings and I've talked to P O about it as well at times. Going on to the agriculture, I agree with councillor Fund that about the commercial agri and the farming, that's certainly beef and sheep farming who sustains the employment in these industries. And without the small family farms, which Roscommon is mostly based with small family farms, these businesses like your agri suppliers, like your factories, wouldn't survive and we wouldn't have the employment in rural Ireland. And it's very important to Roscommon that we have that. I'd also like to support councillor Crosby on that Ballytui Road in Tarm and Barry. It's a very populated area, very busy road leading to the school. And there should be footpaths, cycleway even as well, and that really should be part of our plan. And there's also, as regards Strokes Town, I hope that there will be plans for the likes of Strokes Town, El Fenn, Balhadreen. That we wouldn't forget about them. And finally, And I know, and finally, I'd just like eh to welcome, I'd I'd like to see the thing that's the discussion on anaerobic digesters. I think it's very important that we look into this and I would encourage everyone to make submissions and especially young people. I think all as councillors and executive and all, we need to to put this out and get submissions in. The young people that will put in submissions on this, maybe, might be the people that'll be sitting here in in years to come or definitely they'll be in business or working in the area. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I just think councillor Catherine Shanahan, and then we'll go back to the planning section. Councillor Shanahan.
Thank you eh, thank you, Cahill. And again, like my colleagues there, I'd like to thank eh the chief executive and all the staff that were involved in putting together this plan. It was very easy to read and eh the photographs and everything in it were very good. Eh I just want to, lots of the points have been raised by my colleagues. I'd just like to mention eh about the eh education and as a member of the board of the G R E T B and I'm on the board of eh Athlon I T at the moment, I just think eh it's, I'm, I'm very pleased to read. I'm very pleased to read in this where it says about eh Roscommon Town eh being a hope eh maybe eh for having an area outside of Roscommon. I'm very sorry now, I had it up here, I was just going, can you just bear with me for one minute, please? It's on page one six two. On page one six two eh where we see that Roscommon has been identified as having an area eh outside of the town for education purposes. And eh I just think this is, this is very good eh. It says that eh eh sorry councillor, would you mind if I just come back? I had everything in order, but I didn't hear you coming in to give us the name. Could I let the next person speak and come back and be in order? Sorry about that.
Would you, councillor Shanahan, I'll go back to the planning section and then we'll have a cup of coffee and by then you should be in order because we have to break very soon for about thirty minutes for COVID restrictions. Back to the planning section.
Thank you.
Yeah, just eh first of all eh, the joint urban area plan for eh Athlon, Monksland eh that that does have a legal status under legislation and there have been joint urban plans or lo- eh local area plans, I should say, done in other counties eh, in particular Carlo, Leish come to mind eh and that they've done, they've done joint plans before. So it's, it's nothing new, but it will be something different for us eh to undertake. Eh the clarification on the vacant site levy, just to say, it was people who wrote into us asking that they shouldn't be liable for the vacant site levy. So we've took, because we, we took their word for it, that they said it was being used for agricultural purposes. That being the case, then it's been taken off the zoning. So it's them who actually instigated it and I need to, that's a really important point eh to make. On the rural housing guidelines, we're still waiting for further information from the department. Obviously, the Flemish decree has a big part to play eh. We've spoken to you before, the councillors and we've looked across eh various submissions by the O P R to other local authorities in relation to rural housing. We feel we've gone some way with the language that's been presented to you today to address the issues and obviously a number of the representations that you've been bringing forward to myself. I think it's also very important eh when we're talking about this county development plan and sort of go back to something the chief executive said at the beginning. It is very much a strategic plan, it's not a detailed plan. It's a strategic plan and it has to stay at that level because we're talking about the county of Roscommon. So we can't really be getting into some of the details of of certain eh certain elements of of the county. That said, there are plans in place for Strokes Town, Castlewey, Balhadreen and Elfin. But please remember, this is about looking after the county into the future for future generations. It's not to be used to claim grants. You know, it it it's, it's much bigger than that. This is about creating an infrastructure and an environment for the future. Not, not so people can quote things in grants. That, that can come forward anyway with the policies that we have overall in the county development plan. So I think that's important to know. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much eh for that intervention. It's now a quarter past eleven. I propose that we take a break until eh eleven forty, okay? That's, that's COVID restrictions really more than my desire to abandon the meeting at this stage. We'll be all back at eleven forty, okay? Thank you.